It being six o'clock, I called the February two thousand and twenty-four Town of Clayton Planning Board Meeting to order. We will now have roll call.
Thank you Chair. I'll do a roll call here. Chair Moore.
Present.
Board Member Spence.
He contacted us that he would be not here tonight and he's an alternate.
Okay, thank you. Board Member Williams.
Yep.
Board Member Lee.
Here.
Board Member Applewhite.
Here.
Board Member Lipscomb.
Here.
Board Member Dupree.
Here.
Board Member Gleason.
Here.
Board Member Saraski.
Here.
Board Member Blonde, or Bland, sorry.
Here.
And our Council liaison, Board Member Andrea Archer. Here, thank you.
Present.
Thank you. May we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge of Allegiance.
To the life of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. The next item on the agenda is item two, any adjustments to the agenda, staff?
We have a correction. Ms. Spence was not at the last meeting, so staff will do that correction and move forward. That's the only correction that was brought to our attention.
Okay, yeah, we'll move right into the approval of the minutes and we can make that a correction into the January twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four minutes. Are there any other corrections to the January twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four minutes? If not, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Board Member Dupree. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Williams. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is two thousand and twenty-three, well, next item on the agenda is a public meeting, item four A, two thousand and twenty-three dash two, two oh one dash R Z. Uh, I think it's Coulon Company LLC. Presenter is Planner Bruce Pennable.
Good evening Board. This is a conventional rezoning in front of you today. The applicant is requesting to rezone from residential large lot, which is one of our least densoning districts, to heavy industrial district. Currently, there might be an existing single-family home on the site or some other older structure, but other than that, there is no any kind of commercial or industrial use at the moment. Uh, this is located off of Powhatan Road, which you may be familiar with, not far away from the former town-owned wastewater treatment facility there across the way. Current zoning map, just for your education here, is there's the RL showing there. That star represents where the public notice was placed on the property. On the proposed map there, you see that the proposed zoning would turn this into the high industrial district, which would be this slightly more pink or magenta pink surrounded by LID, where there also, across the street there are Powhatan, there is also the heavy industrial district not far away. This area in the future land use map is shown as an employment center. One, some of the encouraged uses in the employment center is industrial warehouse, office, research and development, and other such items like that, that we believe that this is consistent as far as the future land use goes with the employment center designation. As far as compatibility with the rezoning, we believe it fulfills goals. Land use number one, it preserves Clayton's character while allowing for growth and development in appropriate areas. We feel that the policy LU one point three encourages non-residential land uses in areas consistent with the future land use map. Again, this is employment center area as part of the future land use map, so I believe it's consistent there. And potentially, if this was rezoned to industrial, we feel it aligns with policy LU one point four. It encourages new businesses and non-residential development in employment centers designated on the map. Uh, planning staff does recommend approval of the rezoning based off of those items there that we've listed and the consistency with the future land use map and the comprehensive growth plan. Uh, you've been provided, Board Members, with a consistency sheet. This sheet has four options for you. Um, motion number one is highlighted red. That is the recommended motion for approval and the provided consistency statement there for you too. There are three other options. For those who are not familiar with it, the other options include that you recommend denial, even though it is consistent with the future land use map and the comprehensive twenty forty-five growth plan. Or that you recommend approval and it is inconsistent with the twenty forty-five growth plan and the future land use map, or that you recommend denial and also suggest that it is inconsistent with the future land use map and the comprehensive plan. And that's the end of my presentation for this. The applicant here is speaking, answer questions, and staff is prepared to answer questions as well.
Does any Board Member have a question for staff?
I do.
Yes.
Um, so I currently live nearby the property. I drive by it every day and can confirm it is vacant. Um, however, with the pretreatment plant adjacent across the street, we have heard a lot of complaints from neighbors in the area that the smell is really bad. So my question is, will the byproduct of the fractioning tower, you know, increase the already terrible smell in the area?
Uh, staff isn't really prepared to speak on any kind of proposed use for the site at this time, just because nothing's been submitted and we haven't had nothing to review. All future submittals would have to adhere to the town's new U D O and have to meet all those standards and any other state standards as well. Um, but the applicant may be able to answer some questions for you related to their potential product reuse.
And then I have a second question. Depending on what the plan is for the area, would this be a great time to propose to the Department of Transportation of making that a grade separated crossing? With the movement of the YMCA fields and then the redevelopment, I would say with the passing of rezoning this property, be a good time to at least put that on the step?
So that's something that could be pursued. So if, when this property, if rezoned, or even if it's never rezoned, is to be developed in some way, there will be roadway improvements that'll be required as part of that. Um, that would be a great time for our engineering department, who also, we have a consultant with N C D O T, who'd be a part of that that could discuss that further.
Yep.
Any other Board Member with questions? Board Member Applewhite?
Uh, Bruce, just for clarity, on the zoning map, we have the new districts proposed by the new ordinance. Did the town has not completed a total rezone of all these parcels? Are we just overlaying the new districts just for clarity? So that people understand the difference between the new light industrial district versus what it was in the previous ordinance?
Yeah, so the one goal we set out was so that we wouldn't have to do a townwide mass rezoning when we did the new U D O and brought into effect. So many of the zoning districts, we translated into these newer zoning districts. So the low, I'm sorry, low, uh, low intensity industrial districts and the high intensity industrial districts are very similar. There have been some uses that have been either added or removed from input from the planning board of the steering committee and council as well, and some public input. Um, but for most part, they're translations and they're very similar and identical in many of the standards and such as well.
Okay. Yeah, if I, sorry Chair, Chair Moore, if I can add, so on the data, the effective data, the U D O on January second, twenty twenty-four, the existing districts were then established as these new districts, if that helps. So prior, so the way you're seeing is the R L L and the L I D and the H I D are the new U D O zoning districts. When the application, when the application was submitted, those under the prior zoning ordinance, so that's why you'll see formerly known as, we'll probably be doing that with our upcoming rezonings, because they were formerly known as another zone district, and now they have been changed with the new U D O.
And if the Board likes, staff can also make a mention in future presentations, if you'd like to know if, if a use was, you know, perhaps not permitted under the old code and is now permitted under this new zoning district or something like that, we can work to do that as well.
Sure. And will the applicant be here to answer questions?
I believe there's someone, staff, can you answer any questions?
I'll say.
Anybody else? I, just to be clear, looking at the map, and so the surrounding, the adjacent surrounding properties are light industrial, and this is requested for heavy.
Yes, sir.
Industrial, okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you. We're now here from the applicant.
Good evening. My name is Stephen Sanderson. I'm with Sanderson Engineering and I made a submittal for the rezoning tonight on behalf of my client, Coulon Company LLC. Um, as was stated, the rezoning request that we are asking for is consistent with all of the Town of Clayton's future plans. Um, the future growth plan, the future use plan, and so therefore, we request that the rezoning be approved. Um, I'll be happy to answer any questions that anyone has, but specifically to Mr. Gleason. Um, there will be no smell from our process. We, it is completely contained. Uh, we will be basically a recycling facility for Freon. Anytime a air conditioner is serviced and/or replaced, the Freon has to be captured, and then the companies take it back to their facility and store it. This company purchases that used Freon, runs it through the refractionation tower, breaks it into its individual components, and then captures those individual components. We then will truck it across the road to our existing facility at thirty-nine fifty Powhatan Road, where we remix it and make new Freon for the new chemical compositions that refrigerators, freezers, and air conditioners use today. Companies, carrier, you name it, name anybody, they change, as soon as their patent runs out, they change the composition of it so that they can always have patented product in their machines. And so that's why, that's why we'll exist, is to recycle that, and so because the material is lighter than air, it cannot be released because it will be gone. And so there's nothing that will leave our site. And as far as your question on traffic, um, this project will have zero impact to the traffic. There is, I am told by Mr. Jeremy Keltner from Novo Nordisk, he came to our neighborhood meeting, and we discussed several items with him, but one of them was traffic. And there are studies by D O T, according to him, there are studies by D O T going on right now to figure out how to best service their facility. And whatever that is, is going to be very much priority to D O T in service and getting the vehicles that go in and out of that plant. Uh, and whatever they do, our six trucks a day aren't going to be a problem.
I wasn't necessarily referring to your facility as traffic, but as someone who works in the industry, I would hate for you to design a property and then be torn away by any future development that would happen with the roads, so.
I understand. Does anyone else have any other questions?
Mr. Applewhite?
Thanks. Uh, one question, just for clarity, this is a safe process, and I know for a rezoning, we don't want to get too much into the uses of the property, but uh, the planning board does have a responsibility to make sure that the rezoning requests don't have an adverse impact to the surrounding neighbors and community. Uh, there is a children's bounce house company next door, and just, you just clarify that it will be safe and not cause any issues for children down the road.
Well, compared to the, our neighbors, we're the safest thing around. Uh, the chemicals that are at Novo Nordisk, if they escape are deadly. The chemicals that are at the sewer treatment plant, if they escape are deadly. The chemicals that are at our plant, if they escape, they're going to vent into the atmosphere and they'll never be known.
Thank you.
So we're going to be, we're going to be the safest thing around in that area, as far as all of the industrial sites that are there, at least for right now.
Perfect. Thank you for the clarity.
Sure.
Yes, Ms. Blaydon?
I believe you told me, and it makes, it makes a lot of sense, the fractionation is already taking place next door. It's taking place at.
Yes, yes. We were told by Mr., I can't, sorry, I'm terrible with names, Mr. Keltner, that Novo Nordisk uses a fractionation, uses multiple fractionations columns in their process of making the drugs, material, whatever, at their new site. And so they, they have fractionation columns on, on site, and they create some of this, uh, well, I'm not going to start naming chemicals, because I had took two semesters of chemistry and I'm proud of my C. But there was a mechanical engineer and a chemical engineer, and in about two seconds, I was behind the eight ball and trying to figure out what they were talking about. But, uh, yes, it's already used in the, it's already, it's on their site. They actually, I mean, they're being constructed and be ready for use whenever they get into their process.
Yes, Board Member Dupree?
Is there any waste byproduct from that process, and if so, where does it go?
The only waste byproduct would be the, um, whatever comes off of burning natural gas. We will be using natural gas for the heat source, and so whatever venting that is, but that's the only byproduct.
Everything else is.
Everything else is contained inside of large metal domed pressure chambers to transport the chemical back and forth. It's in liquid form in the transportation and in storage, and then it is put into a gas form and mixed in order to be able to be utilized in the air conditioning systems.
Any other questions from Board? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is there any member of the public that would like to speak? Hearing none, I'll turn it over to the Board for their consideration.
Mr. Chair, we can make a motion at the appropriate time.
Hearing none, I'll entertain your motion.
A motion to approve consistent with the future land use map, recommend approval of this rezoning request based on the consistency with the future land use map and the adopted twenty forty-five comprehensive growth plan in that the property is designated as an employment center. In the future land use map, goal LU one moves to preserve Clayton's character while allowing for growth and development in the appropriate areas. Policy LU one point three seeks to encourage non-residential land uses and consistent with the future land use map. And policy LU one point four seeks to encourage new businesses and non-residential development employment centers designated on the future land use map. This action is reasonable and in the public interest in that the comprehensive growth plan encourages industrial uses in this area, and the request is compatible, compatible with the existing zoning and land uses in this area.
We have a motion for approval by Board Member Applewhite. Is there a second?
Second.
Got a second by Board Member Dupree? Any, any uneasiness? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say no. Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Gateway Forty-two Small Area Plan.
Good evening Chair Moore and members of the Commission. This evening is the first, the first presentation of the N C forty-two Gateway Plan. Um, this plan was presented to Town, presented to the Town Council Work Session before, and this is the first step to have a recommendation that will then go forward to Town Council at the next, the second meeting in March. The consultant is joining us from Atlanta, Georgia. He's on the call, so he's going to be doing a presentation right here for you all. But I just wanted to give up an overarching approach here from what I've learned from their work. This plan here covers an area that is to the south, would be the southwest of Clayton, and it includes some area that's both in the extraterritorial jurisdiction as well as area that's outside of that boundary. You'll see some kind of new ideas that the consultant was able to provide us with in this plan. There is also a lot of stakeholder engagement with the public that occurred previously. Um, so there is some recommendations that are included in this plan that, that staff, and we can then kind of figure out, how does this plan stay off of the shelf and get carried forward in our future land use map? And possibly our extraterritorial jurisdiction, and just how that affects the town's overall planning work. But this is one of the first steps to get a formal document before you all for an area that is exciting and coming up here in Clayton. So Blake, are you, are you on the call? Great. Are you able to share your screen by any chance?
Yeah, I can.
Um, great. There is Mr. Blake.
Cool.
Great. You, you have the floor then, and just feel free to, we can see your screen.
Cool.
And then we'll open it up for questions. Thank you.
Sounds good. Well, thank you, thank you. Well, hi y'all. My name is Blake Reeves. I would have preferred to be with y'all today, but I came down very sick this weekend, so staying home, but also means I've lost my voice a little bit, so let me know if you can't hear me. Um, yeah, we are walking through the, the Gateway Forty-two Small Area Plan document today. Uh, so as opposed to making separate slides for the purposes of this, we're looking at the actual final document, as is, which the town has had for a little bit of time now, I think since, since we presented in September. Um, yeah, this process started in late twenty twenty-two and ran through the bulk of, of last year. Um, so yeah, I'm just going to talk over it a little bit, high level today. Happy to answer questions at any point through, but really hoping to save those to the end and make sure if there's any clarification that's needed, we can discuss. Um, yeah, the, the document has really overview, the, the logic we use, um, the land use plan that changed as a result of this, general plan recommendations, both in terms of priority activities and investments and implementation tasks as well. Um, so project overview, we start out, gosh, if y'all can see that. Um, started out by really identifying why this area was so important. It was a recommendation that came both out of the twenty forty-five, um, comp plan of a few small area plan recommendations. This was one of those. But really, its importance was derived a lot from both the fact that it's, it's sitting there along the new upgraded forty-two, and really, it's sort of the connection between the Triangle Region as, as the nation's second fastest growing M S A um, and I ninety-five, this corridor that, that really connects to all of the Eastern Seaboard, and really the importance of these, these two interchanges that occur right there, that really do become the front door for Clayton. Um, in many, many ways, the way that most folks will be driving into town, the first thing they see when they get off. Um, so really, how do, how do you make a front door that's welcoming, that represents the town in exciting ways? Um, so that was sort of what our task was. The area you can see is here. Um, see, there's something about this graphics that are weird. Um, there you go. Um, the area, as you can see, you see the, you know, the existing seventy upgraded forty-two, uh, running east-west, uh, the old forty-two running here. So you've got, um, you know, the Health District here, as you come down, you've got Walmart, Lowe's, um, farther down with Swift Creek here on this bottom border. So in a lot of ways, this is, this is an area that I don't think is thought of as one connected piece of land today, or one identifiable piece of land. Um, but we'll go through a little bit later about what, what is the tie that holds this all together. Um, we started out by looking at, at the smart growth strategy that, as is laid out in the twenty forty-five comp plan, and really tried to align those goals about what was important for this area. And it really helped us see that there were, um, there were a number of goals that we could stretch through here. Um, through the course of that, about eleven-month process, we did a lot of activities, including five community engagement activities with a website that was up for the whole time. We went to Harvest Fest and had three, um, work, workshops with community members. Um, we had a really great success rate in doing all of these five activities. Um, with our website alone, we received more than seven thousand views, which was translated through I P addresses to more than four thousand unique visitors. through IP addresses to more than 4,000 unique visitors, uh, and more than 1,200 folks, uh, we had more than 1,200 survey responses, which we thought was an amazing, um, number. So folks were really invested, um, in, in really answering this and, and talking about what the future of this area could and should be, uh, to represent, um, Clayton. So, uh, a lot of recurring themes that came out of that work. Um, the, the big ones, as, as we grouped them all together, was about the need to improve mobility corridors, uh, both in terms of, of slowing, kind of slowing them down for a pace of life, making them more community thoroughfares and not just big, um, not just big things that move, uh, that move cars. The second being about cultivating complete communities, about folks wanting a lot more amenities within a small area of their home. Uh, many of these folks stressed how much they are, uh, forced to be reliant on their vehicles, drive outside their neighborhoods for any basic goods and services, uh, on major DOT roads that are all, uh, you know, covered in lots of, of traffic. And so there's no easy way to get around. Um, three of providing green space amenities of feeling like there wasn't recreational open space, uh, or places, um, to interact with the natural landscape that is present in lots of these areas still. Um, and fourth, uh, fostering small town charm and all those things, numerous folks saying that they had moved to Clayton for some of that small town charm and really were fearing that it was disappearing, um, in some capacity. This imperative for small town charm was by far the thing that we heard the most, uh, people really feeling like it was being threatened. Uh, and then a lot of the, the, the impetus behind this becoming, um, you know, that folks didn't want to see the upgraded interchange turning into a place, uh, where it was just going to be a bunch of truck stops or other things, you know, that the interstate adjacent types of development, um, that serve the interstate but do not serve the communities immediately adjacent to them. And so folks were really hoping this plan could sort of, uh, serve as a defensive move in a way that really, uh, the town could get out ahead of what this area would be before all the upgrades were complete. So, uh, we really thought a lot about, uh, what the land use patterns were. The other sort of impetus that drove this was the, uh, the ability to expand, um, the ETJ, uh, because of the 2020, the increase in the 2020 population of the town, there was an allowance to go a mile farther in terms of the ETJ. So you can see the existing area here in green. Uh, it loosely went to Swift Creek and so we used that as a, uh, as the southwest corner of the site. And so a, a lot, a large part of our work was taking all these areas, uh, that are in maroon and trying to reach those communities and making sure folks whose land or property was going to come under the purview of the town through these ETJ, um, expansions were fully in the way, aware of what was going on, were fully consulted. And so much of our, our initial outreach was, was finding, uh, churches, community groups, some, small businesses in this area and using them to, as much as possible, expand the messaging about getting involved. Um, we also looked at, as we talked about that small town charm, we, we looked a lot about what small town, uh, land use patterns were and really tried to identify the difference of, uh, you know, what we think of suburban land use patterns as those things that separate all the land uses in different ways. Um, you know, where you have, uh, commercial grouped over here, housing grouped over here, industrial grouped over here and looked, uh, to the precedence of American small towns that really, this mixed use happened at a much smaller scale. Um, so, uh, we looked, uh, first at the existing land use, as you can see that it's, uh, up to the edge of the existing ETJ. We looked at all the land uses that, that were present there. Um, we walked all through, through and studied these and their ability to perform, um, for the town. So this first page is looking at the, uh, residential designations, um, that are present in the area, uh, running from the agricultural rural residential up to the high density residential. Um, and we also looked at the mixed use designations that were present, uh, the neighborhood center, community center and the recreational open space. And really I think the thing that was really jumped out at us is that all of the commercial and/or mixed use designations that exist, uh, today, um, it, they are all rooted on their relationship with other land use patterns. So you can see it right here in the first sentence of neighborhood center. It says a neighborhood center is generally located near concentrations of existing or planned residences. So that's basically saying you can, uh, use this designation because immediately adjacent to it are some denser areas of residential. So that's why you can put commercial there. And really as you unpack the language of all of these, they're all, uh, relative to other uses adjacent to them. And we realized that there wasn't a current designation, uh, that was about trying to get a mix of uses on a small site at a small scale, where all the uses were sort of insular and present and self-serving. Um, and so we really, we thought about the ability to, to make a new land use, or the need really to make a new land use designation that supported that kind of small town charm, uh, in some of these areas. Um, and so we, we, uh, denoted this, the name is complete communities, uh, is sort of the thinking that was underlying this as a new land use designation. And so a place where you could expect to get, uh, kind of, uh, neighborhood serving commercial uses adjacent, um, in, in a small area next to your home where you weren't required to like drive all the way over to a big arterial. So we were looking at some precedent imagery of kind of, um, a small scale commercial across this country, even where it's clustered in a way where it can be around kind of small plazas or other areas, uh, and really how were these places created and what are the support mechanisms built into the land use designations that, that allow these places to, to thrive and serve the immediately adjacent neighborhoods? And ultimately, as we thought about that, we kind of, uh, there's this, a series of buildup maps to how we arrived at what we arrived at, but we took the whole area first and designated all of the existing, um, residential neighborhoods. That's everything you see in tan here, uh, and preserved all those under the existing, um, land use designations for single family. Then we, uh, looked at the major corridors that are running through the site. They are all DOT corridors, I mentioned that now, uh, but we looked at, um, the, uh, current traffic counts and were able to sort of, uh, denote a, a hierarchy of three, uh, with the, the, um, Cornwallis and Ranch Road being your most significant, uh, traffic, uh, the step down to number two being Barbara Mill Government, and then just some, three to some of these smaller interstitial streets. And what we realized is in order for this commercial to be, uh, in these neighborhoods, it needed to be on these main corridors. And so, um, oh gosh. Um, what we did is we took a, a buffer that you can see now, uh, that's extending on both sides of those corridors and, and designated it as an area where commercial could happen. So really all these, uh, kind of tan areas in the back that, or sorry, the areas that are sort of white that aren't colored are extremely large parcels, um, some many, many acres. And so the, 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 one of the issues that we were bumping up against too, is if you were to take any other type of mixed use designation and apply it to this area, the entirety of the site would allow, be allowed to be commercial. And that was something that we wanted, that we didn't want to occur because that was sort of the antithesis of what the community was wanting in asking for this smaller scale, immediately adjacent commercial options. And so what we've done is take these buffered areas that have a relationship to the busyness of the street and set back on the, uh, on these number one streets, 400 feet in which commercial can occur, uh, 200 on the second tier and 100 on the third tier. And so that makes these buffered areas in which, uh, commercial is, is available to, um, apply on those sites. Um, and then a lot of what, what the strategies that we were creating here is to make sure that inside of these parcels that are designated this way, um, there is a, uh, uh, we're not creating sort of insular communities, but we're creating, uh, street networks that connect to each other. And so there's a lot of language in the recommendations about how all those things play out. So we create something that's more akin to, uh, small town, um, patterns as opposed to, uh, larger scale suburban ones that wouldn't, wouldn't be really appropriate here. Um, and so ultimately the updated land use map looks this way. We have all of the preserved neighborhoods, not touched at all. Um, really everything that was underdeveloped or undeveloped is this kind of pink salmony color, which is the new complete communities designation, uh, as well the buffers on both sides of it that allow commercial within that area. I'm kind of going at a really high level now, but, um, there was also recommendations that we came out of here around branding and wayfinding for the district, around streetscape improvements, around open space amenities and around multi-use trail systems, um, all things that were expressed, uh, very important by the community. And so we talked about what branding and wayfinding looks like for some of these places that will be kind of featured gateways of the town for anyone who's entering and what the community preferred in terms of the looks of those, uh, recommended locations. Um, we looked at recommended streetscape improvements. Um, as I said previously, these are all streets that are under NC DOT jurisdiction. Uh, so at current, there is not an, an ability to, uh, navigate some of those or make changes to the corridors, but as is NC DOT policy, there needs to be a plan put in place and approved by a municipality, uh, first and foremost, before any changes can even be considered. And so we did want to get some of these changes on the books. For all of those primary corridors. Uh, we had, uh, recommendations around multi-use trail systems, which was something that a number of residences stressed, other ways to get around that didn't force them to get in their cars. And so we did a study of where those paths can occur. Uh, we've looked at the, uh, the 2045 proposed, uh, trails already on the books, um, as well as street adjacent greenways and inter-block multi-use trails and carved out ways by which we could create, um, those options. And lastly, we looked at recommended open spaces, both in terms of, uh, where they should be located and amenities, um, that could be pursued, really looked at study, uh, named a number of study areas that we think the town should study, uh, for places where they could be putting in proposed parks, um, and open space, particularly with relationship to Swift Creek and the ability to build that in as important, uh, waterway within the town. Um, and lastly, looking at the amenities that were, uh, requested, um, by the community, a lot of things that were sort of organic in nature that sort of were a callback to the, um, naturalistic motifs, um, so that felt like it was really celebrating this, this great, uh, setting, a lot of which is agricultural or forested today. So, um, yeah, then we have, uh, a lot of implementa, implementation tasks that were derived out of here. Um, this gray is not really showing up on my screen very well, I don't know if you can see it, but, um, really, uh, first and foremost, the recommended action was to implement the recommended expansion, uh, of the existing ETJ. Uh, and there's a number of other recommendations around here, uh, those that have, uh, investments tied to them, we made recommendations, um, about those. And then, um, lastly, we, we, uh, provided language, um, for what we think the, um, complete communities regulations could be. Seems right now that's important is that it be approved as a, uh, as a categorical designation as a typology. And then there's sort of the how to make it happen later, which actually might fall more into updates to UDO or other things. So we've sort of left it as an appendix, um, for now. So I'm running at a super high level and I'm not sure how familiar anyone was with this, so I don't know if this, I went too fast, stayed too high, um, but any questions?
Yes, um, before I get started, can I, I'm, uh, take upon a personal privilege. Oh, but I want to ask the first question. And it's a beautiful plan. If I was a Johnston County Commissioner, I would love the plan is increasing the value of the land by 2045 for the land outside the city limits of Clayton. But as a town of Clayton resident, the plan doesn't mention how we're going to drive retail, commercial or industrial residential into the corporate town limits. That wasn't referenced at all and that's bothersome. The ETJ, I'm, I'm, I'm missing something. I'm hoping that the town of Clayton sees the purpose of land use of the ETJ is to drive retail, commercial, industry and residential into the corporate town limits, not just to oversee it for the sake of overseeing it. It serves no purpose. There is, there's no gain for a town residence. There's no, there's no tax revenue, there's no sales tax revenue, there's no monetary gain at all, just for the sake of overseeing it. So I, I, I'm confused when we just keep talking about expanding the ETJ just for the sake of expanding it. There is no gain for a town of Clayton resident if that's the case. So most municipalities see the ETJ, the mile, or only 5% of the municipalities in North Carolina have the three mile. Or, and only 10% have the two mile, the overwhelming majority have the one mile ETJ. But, but just to oversee it for the sake of overseeing it without the corridors being drivers, like you said, the gateway, we, here, here's our town, here's our city. We want to look at our, our corridors and our gateway for people coming into our town or our city. We want to make sure the residential or the commercial or the industry that's on the entryway into our city or town is compatible. That's the purpose of the ETJs normally. But your plan just seems to be regulate for the sense of regulation. And I'm confused by that for, as a town of Clayton resident, because I want to hear how we're going to drive that 42 traffic into the corporate town limits. How are we going to get retail into the corporate limits of Clayton? How are we going to get commercial into the corporate limits of Clayton? How are we going to get industry and get residents? Not just making the beautification of the residential areas in ETJ, but I want to get those individuals into Clayton. To me, that's the purpose of overseeing ETJ. Maybe I'm confused.
Um, yeah, I could answer that lots of different ways. I, I think, um, I think that's certainly one way to view it and to, and answering that question, we're certainly making improvements to all of the mobility corridors, uh, certainly those that, that head right into the center of town, uh, providing alternative, um, uh, mobility networks through, through paths and trails, which are all about biking. And they're sort of all kind of like a spider web coming, you know, pushing into town. We've made connections with all of, um, with Clayton's proposed trail network as it already has come in. So providing, uh, so that it doesn't just stop, but actually extends farther down, um, into this region. Um, and so certainly in terms of connectivity, we certainly, I think all of that will, um, you know, take some of these folks who may feel unincorporated in a way today and make them feel more connected, um, to town, um, through some of these strategic moves. But I think, uh, as I was saying earlier, I think part of the ETJ expansion as well and ETJ for, for police jurisdiction and other, and other reasons as well, uh, often is about kind of control of nuisance or control of, uh, other uses that are problematic. And I think part of this is, is coming out of that as well, knowing that, uh, both interchanges, both at Ranch Road and the existing 42 with those upgrades. I mean, that is where you're going to have out of town developers come knocking on your door who want to put the big, um, you know, giant logistics warehouse where you're going to put all of these, uh, other uses that are not, um, you know, not flattering, not community serving. Um, and I think some of this was about trying to kind of control some of that, um, and so that, that you are creating, um, uh, a kind of a desirable place to live and getting out ahead of, of all these lessons that we've learned in the last 50 years about what happens at an interchange, uh, in terms of development.
Any other questions? Yes, Board Member Applewhite.
I have a, a couple of questions and thoughts. I, I think first and foremost, um, maybe, you know, other, maybe staff can answer as well. Are there any plans to, for Clayton to extend utilities to this side of Clayton further toward the, the ETJ? I'm trying to think if there is an ETJ expansion, um, and there are commercial businesses that want to go along, um, in the connected communities areas, um, is there going to be utility infrastructure? Is it going to come from the town of Clayton? Is it going to come from Johnston County? What is that going to look like? Uh, I know that might be too far in the weeds, but I think it's an important question.
Um, planning staff can only speak of this so much as far as the extension of utilities. I do know that in some instances, we have worked with Johnston County to come up with some type of agreement to serve different developments around the area that may be in ETJ, uh, to, in order to bring those developments into, you know, compliance at least for the densities that they're proposing. Um, from what I've heard, there have been talks about potential annexations of properties along Cornwallis and 42 already at the moment that were started, that have kind of stalled, but part of that was they would annex into the town to be able to get the density that they were looking for. And I believe that our engineering and our water resources were working on some type of, uh, agreement. So given, given the growth, it's difficult to say that we will be able to extend all utilities into that area, but most likely it'll be some kind of interconnected agreement for Johnston County.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, have other questions for Blake?
You can continue.
Okay. Uh, Blake, thank you for the, the presentation. Um, I attended, I think, one of the workshops, uh, um, at the, the rec center and, and I think there were still folks there that lived in this area that don't understand what an ETJ is, how it impacts them. They don't know whether they're in the town of Clayton or, um, you know, across the other part of the county, folks think they're in Garner and there's a lot of confusion about it. Um, I think we could help in some of the education and what that means for them. Uh, but I, I have a, a question broadly about the plan. It's, it, it's an ambitious plan. I think you even said in the staff report, it's an ambitious plan. I like the plan, but I, I'm concerned about the viability of it. If it's going to be something that, uh, the town wants to, to use and, and to look toward as their, you know, whether it's text amendments that come before this board and then the town council, we want to make sure it's viable. Um, I'm looking at even some of the, the trail ideas, whether they're along the road or off-road, um, in that last section, um, it would be hard for me to me to think that there could be a trail infrastructure through or along government road. That it seems hard for me to believe at this point. And I'm a fan of trails. I want you all to know that. I think it'd be great to have them everywhere. But can you speak to maybe how your team went about thinking through the viability of some of the nodes, the connection nodes, the trail infrastructure? Just talk a little bit about the process of how y'all came up with some of those locations. I like the idea. I just, I think it'd be helpful for us to know more about that.
Sure. So first and foremost, I mean, I think we think of any, the most powerful mechanism that's derived from any comp plan or small area plan is, is the land use plan. And so I think first and foremost, we were establishing a land use, land use patterns that would encourage healthy, beneficial kind of community focused growth. And with that, we were kind of trying to figure out the means by which that would drive interesting change. So in terms of the corridors that have a relationship with NCDOT, I mean, we've certainly seen them pushing for more, more than they have in the past, looking for multimodal corridors. And so some of that could come in the future through, you know, grants or upgrades that are happening where some of those requests can be made, if it's in there right away with the language created around the complete communities. We were looking for means by which we could incentivize inter-block, inter-block trail systems. And really, we looked through lots of precedents of places really around the country, you know, looking at the Beltline here in Atlanta, a project that I always spent a lot of time working on, places where trails have become the highest value mobility pattern, and the properties have kind of taken what was the back of their property and also allowed it to be another form of front, and really been a really powerful economic development move where just investing in trail systems that can generate other, other new forms and uses around them. And so certainly, there's a means by which you can make the case that these rail, rail trail systems around the country or other trail systems have had huge economic ROIs on them. And that really also, so if the town's working on it one hand, and you're also providing incentive structures through the deployment of some of these other zoning or land use patterns, there's a, there's an ability for residents to be in on it in terms of those inter-block connections and looking in interest of connecting that. We also found, it may not be super visible if I go to this map, but when you look at what's currently undeveloped and underdeveloped today, I'm trying to think what's the best map to see it on, probably this guy, that really, there's a means by which all of these neighborhoods could be connected up to the center of Clayton and to Clayton's already approved paths, the one to head down 42. And you can see that really, I mean, there's a whole kind of green forested areas right now by which you could connect this whole system, connect all these neighborhoods. So there's potentially a really, really valuable new way of getting around, new way of orienting to some of these trail systems that could be really, really powerful if they were harnessed more. So I think we kind of did our prelim study, but certainly, I think our recommendations was studying it further and trying to understand what incentive packages could be helped to make it both a partnership between individual property owners as well as the town.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Board Member Dupree?
Mine's more of a comment than a question. To me, the ETJ, whether it's extended or not extended, things are going to get built in this area regardless. The area is growing. I think when we extend the ETJ, and as I'm a property owner, not in the, I'm in the existing ETJ in the 42 corridor area. But to me, what this does, the benefit to the town of Clayton and the citizens of Clayton, is that it gives this body, and more specifically the town council, specific ability to determine what gets built and where inside Clayton's doorstep, as opposed to leaving as it is, in which case it falls to the county. They don't all live in Clayton. And somebody that lives on the other side of the county may or may not care what's at Clayton's doorstep, but we do. So to me, that's the benefit of extending the ETJ.
Thank you. Anybody else? Board Member McLeeson?
And so kind of building off that, my question is, and this probably is more for the town, if you extend the ETJ, especially given all of the multimodal like corridor improvements that Blake talked about, would any new developments be therefore all tax revenue would go to the town of Clayton, or would that go to Johnston County? Because as kind of James mentioned, this seems like a great plan. Like, I love it. Like, this is the type of development that I would live for, especially if it's done right. But when you talk about something very similar, like the Eastfield development and Smithfield, the entirety of that development's, all the revenue is going to go to the town of Smithfield and Selma. Whereas it sounds here, this is going to be more of like, oh, we get items for people in Clayton to go do, but it's not necessarily going to draw people in from outside of Clayton. Because as of right now, in my experience, residents of Clayton have two options. We either go into Raleigh and Garner for things to do, or we go to Smithfield for things to do. So this at least kind of keeps that revenue here. But if the tax revenue is going to Johnston County, I don't really see that as a benefit to the community, at least in any areas that are outside the ETJ, other than maybe an entertainment thing. But I don't see the town benefiting from that specifically. And especially when you consider NCDOT and how they pay for things, in order for those multimodal like bike paths to be built, they're going to require the town of Clayton to finance most of that. And if the town's not utilizing it, it seems like a big waste of money.
Was there a question? Board Member McLeeson?
So my question is, is how, is any of the areas outside of the ETJ going to be taxable for Clayton? Like, is that, is Clayton going to see the revenue of taxes, or is Johnston County going to see the revenue?
The only way Clayton would see the revenue taxes is if the property owners annex into the town themselves.
So, so how does that process work? And maybe this is outside the realm of the, let's speak here if that can be longer.
Currently, it's by petition only. So the property owner would have to come in and request to be annexed into the town. We would review it to see if we were able to provide services and how and when and what. And then that would be, there's, there is a place for future conversation on how to reach people in this proposed extended ETJ. And that's conversations that town staff is having and we're going to continue to have. But like, Board Member Dupree, planning staff especially feels that we might have a better chance of controlling what happens and how it grows out there, and hope that eventually that does bring growth and people to come into the town itself.
Hey, I've got a few things. One, I think it would be helpful if the floodplain information was put on here, because there's a lot of floodplain that when you take that into consideration, you know, it really changes the way you look at things. And then there's one road on here that does not truly exist that's shown as commercial potential. And I know because it's on a farm that I live on, this is one that parallels the 40, future Interstate 42, and it crosses Barber Mill Road. So there's one road that just does not exist and where this proposed at is actually a creek or runs alongside of a creek. And then also on Twin Acres Road, that road does not come through. That's a dead end road at this time. So if it's shown as a potential future road, I think you would need to show it the way, the potential future right of way shown at the end of Corbett Road, as, so it doesn't look like an existing road, because that road does not exist at this time. And then I am a ETJ board member, and I think before the ETJ gets extended, there needs to be a better understanding of who provides services to the ETJ residents, because you can call the town of Clayton and Conrad, I don't know if you've run into this yet, but I don't want to say the wrong thing, but I think the nuisance ordinances, the town doesn't, doesn't enforce in the ETJ. So they say, call the county. And then the county turns around and says, we don't enforce anything inside the ETJ. So you call the town. And he's called the town, and they say, hey, we don't enforce the nuisance ordinance in the ETJ because we don't get paid for that. So they call the county, and then the county turns around and said, hey, we told you the last time you called up here, we don't enforce anything in the town of Clayton ETJ. So call the town of Clayton. So it's a runaround. So I think there's some things that need to be fixed internally between Johnston County and the town of Clayton before there's any additional expansion of ETJ. And from what research I've done looking on through the instituted government, there is routes forward to where it can happen in the town and the county can work together. I think it would be something more like, okay, we're going to, the county's going to pay or give the town the right to enforce ordinances there. But I really don't understand all that. But I do feel like at this point, from what I've seen in the past, there's a, the ETJ residents have some amount of disenfranchisement, I guess you'd say, with the way it's currently done right now. So that is a concern for me. Because you shouldn't lose, in my opinion, you shouldn't lose county nuisance ordinances when you come into the town. And it's just, it's almost like you're getting an inferior your product instead of a superior your product, which you would think you would get a superior product if you had the county and the town working together. So I don't know if that's even come up since you've been here. So I don't want to, to spring anything on you you weren't aware of, but that is an issue.
Well, it sounds like it's a kind of a code enforcement component. And, oh, in Burlington, for example, there was, there was this question came up often because the town, the city had its code of ordinances for high grass, for instance, or junk cars. And we were only able to enforce that in the town and the city's corporate limits. So then the ETJ, certain, the state statutes want to say they restrict certain, they don't, we, the ETJ is part of our zoning, our zoning issues. So for land use, building permits, et cetera, we can have authority over that. But for city code of ordinances, or an example, in the town code of ordinances, we have minimum housing, we have, we have noxious weeds, you know, all those kinds of elements, junk cars. We don't have the authority to enforce that in the ETJ boundaries of the town of Clayton. But we do have the zoning land use regulatory component to that, to the ETJ areas.
I guess where I'm getting at is I believe that the county could appoint the town to, to enforce the counties. I know there's ways around that. It's just, I think that there needs to be more study there, because I think that given an inferior your product or taking away those rights from those ETJ residents, what the county says, we don't give you any service anymore, which I think is completely wrong for the county to say that. But also the county's got a very small planning department, considering how big of an area they've got, how much growth they've got going on. They don't really have the ability to do it. So that's, that's just a major, major, major concern, you know. And then, you know, to say that the town wants to, you know, be able to oversee these areas because it's fostering it for future addition to the municipality, and then you're leaving stuff off, and you've got, you know, areas that are, you know, you've got issues with weeds and debris or junk cars that nobody's, nobody's doing anything about, you know. And that's what I'm, that's just a concern. I know that's a very big topic, but that is a concern for me. I'm sensitive towards that as a ETJ board member, and I think that needed to be said.
I'll follow up with our code enforcement officer to see how we could partner with Johnston County in terms of what we got right now. But I hear what you're saying with regard to the confusion, because I experienced it before in Burlington also.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah. Sorry. I have a couple of questions. I have a few questions, but I'm going to narrow it down to my two most important ones. The first one is, is I live in ETJ, but Chair, I agree with you. It's how do we drive people towards Clayton? Absolutely. I live in ETJ, and I want people to go towards Clayton, because the one thing that I see on here, and tell me if I'm wrong, the one thing I see that is absolutely lacking is where is the density going to be? I can't tell by looking at this map where the density is going to be. And you would think the density would be around the interchanges, but I, and I see some density around the 42 interchange, but I see no density around the Ranch Road interchange. And that's in the town. So why isn't there more density around the Ranch Road interchange as a village or, or something that is more sustainable into the future as more dense to bring that tax base and to be able to do some of those other things? I think even the height requirements are low. And I may be more progressive than others to say that height requirements makes a huge difference, but 35 feet and 45 feet is low if you want to make, if you want to have dense development. The other thing about the dense development and the complete community areas is I'm having a hard time understanding what the percentage of commercial versus residential would be. There has to be a good mix in those areas. We have to know what that commercial is. And we have to know that there's residential involved in it, because you want people to stay. If you want, as, I am, I am done traffic engineering in my life. I apologize for those that, that are all traffic engineers in the room. I actually did take classes in traffic engineering. And I always tell people, we don't solve traffic problems, we move traffic problems. We really don't ever solve them. Okay? And I'm saying that as a traffic engineer. And I always tell people, the only one way to solve traffic problems is by eliminating people. Okay? I don't mean killing people. I gotta, I gotta, I always have to, I always have to say this. But it's taking people off of the system. And the best way to take people off of the system is to make dense, multimodal dense or multi-use dense areas where people can stay in one place to be able to do multiple things. And I don't see that on this plan unless someone can tell me where that is in that. So I'm going to stop there with that first question. And then I have a second question to ask after that one.
Yeah, I would say I agree with everything that you said, except for the fact that density, as you're describing it, there is a quite relative term. And I think for us, when we say it mixed use, multi-use place, that can be at a very small scale, that can be one, you know, corner store, convenience store in a little neighborhood, up to, you know, two or three businesses in a row. And I think what we're trying to encourage through this plan was really an effort to make that small scale neighborhood serving commercial. And really, to, to your exact point, that it's getting people out of the car, reducing individual vehicular trips, because you can walk to this very, this kind of small mixed use commercial area that's by your home. I think to previous questions, we were certainly not trying to create large commercial nodes that would pull energy or investment away from Clayton. I think we're trying to create stuff that is, is really serving neighborhoods and that follows kind of the traditional American neighborhoods where we didn't really hardcore separate things. We didn't feel problematic to have two, three, 10, kind of small scale commercial places. And so really, where it goes, it goes all along those corridors is that commercial is allowed. And really, as we kind of drew this in some other diagrams, if you look at kind of this little cluster, we were saying the primary multi, multi-use streets of some of those major corridors were here. You have, you know, anywhere from 100 to 400 feet of distance from that corridor to apply mixed use commercial. So, you know, allowing commercial opportunities, residential up to 12 to 24 acres, 12 to 24 units per acre. And then it falls off and drops down to some of those lower scale residential uses beyond that. And so that, that buffer area all along the corridors is where the commercial goes. But certainly, we're not trying to create a big, you know, fentanyl or something massive there. It's more like smaller scale little buckets.
And to find my interject real quick, sorry to follow up on there. So was it last week that Blake and I met with the team there? And the question of density did come up. You'll notice that on the first bullet point, density and height limitations, in discussing what would this density be? And Blake, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but we were kind of looking at what is a number to, to tie to this type of, to this new use, this new kind of future land use map designation that we have. So you'll notice in the version that was in your staff report does not include density, because that was provided to you all earlier. But Blake, it sounds, it looks like this, this version that you have right now does include that 12 to 24 units per acre. And I think this was a conversation point that we wanted to bring before the commission. And so that's the, to kind of just feel out how comfortable we are to assign a density. It sounds like the height of the 35 foot might be too, too low. So that's something that we could also consider in this plan, because this plan is still a draft technically until it's adopted by council. So if those are some recommendations that the commission would like to make, we can always include those as recommendations from the commission to incorporate, as well as other components that you all find in this plan that we can then take on the council.
And, and just to let you know, I was, what I was looking for is something more And, and just to let you know, I was, what I was looking for is something more prescriptive in the plan about what the use, the mix of that use is. I understand the block and the residential and all that. And I was looking, I was looking for more, something more prescriptive on the entire property, not just the road frontage, right? Because then you still could have density towards the front and non-density towards the back, and you'll lose the density, right, altogether. And so I wanted to make sure that there was, that there was some prescriptiveness in here for the density. And I don't want to see Dollar Generals all over the road. That, that is my biggest fear of, of a plan like this, is you say, commercial along the front, we could have this all we want, and then people are buying three acre or four acre properties and building Dollar Generals all up the road. I want to make sure that what's in this plan actually happens. And I think that goes back to what Commissioner Applewhite was saying. We, we want this to be an actionable plan, which goes to my second point. I'm going to make, I'm going to ask my second question now. I did that segue right there. How do we pay for this? What's the implementation plan for this? Because I don't want the town paying for this. So what have we thought about how we're implementing this entire plan? Are we talking about doing development agreements that we can do in the state statutes now? I mean, I don't know how many development agreements the town has done. Can the town do development agreements in the ETJ to pay for some of these things? And can we do fees and lieu to pay for some of these things as far as multimodal connections or roadway improvements? And then, of course, the, the 600 pound elephant room is that DOT is widening 42 to four, four lane divided roadway. So we're also going to have to think about how that also affects the implementation of this plan. So I just want, kind of want to know what's, what's the, because I didn't see a lot of implementation of the plan, in this plan. So kind of, what, give me some, give me some thoughts about that, how we're going to implement this. And I'll be quiet from now on.
Well, I'll say this first and foremost, that the driving force again behind this is a land use plan that is totally free of charge for you to, you know, implement and put into place. All of the other public realm improvements are, you know, amazing if you get them, but they don't, this plan is not contingent upon having, you know, multi-use trails either adjacent to existing roadways or inner block connections. So I'll start out by saying that. I'll say that the other part again is that we did make recommendations in here about doing a study in terms of incentives for ways for individual property owners to help develop those. The trail systems these days can be done super cheap, sometimes, sometimes not even paved at all. It's just about, you know, how buildings orient to it, and just making a sort of public easement on the backside of a property. So those things can be done pretty cheap. They also can be scaled over time, going from initially just like a mowed trail to later, like a much more structured sidewalk or other things. So those could be done, as was mentioned, you know, before, in partnership with property owners, if there's incentive package in place, or through pursuits of grants or other options, or with those that are in DOT right of way in partnership with them, helping to advance some of their goals around multimodal transit and seeing what, what purses of money are available to pursue those in partnership with them. Because otherwise, I think if you have to do the, those street side adjacent ones outside of the DOT easement, then you're getting into private property that becomes even more problematic, you know, especially if you're outside of the corporate limits of the town. So the other stuff that you're talking about paying for, I mean, I also mentioned the, the, you know, again, that probably more than half of the site is, is, is not within the extension. And so the other stuff, it's really, I think it's, how much do you want to prioritize things like branding and wayfinding moments at these key gateways, at Ranch Road, at the 42 exit, you know, what is the experience that you want when people get off? I mean, is that a priority for the town? And that's not something certainly that, that I can answer. Kind of talk through streetscapes, parks and open spaces, you know, in our last 20 years in this country, we've seen those be huge economic drivers for areas. But I understand the same questions exist around some of these areas outside the town's proper limits. But how do you want to, how do you want to pursue that? So I, I think there's a lot of the recommendations in the back of this are around sort of advanced study of some of those topics.
Chair, if I could offer maybe a little bit of context here, hopefully I'm not speaking out of turn.
Yes, ma'am.
It just, we got to this point in the discussion, and I thought it might be useful for especially some of the newer folks to, to kind of hear how we arrived at this moment. If you've ever looked at the 2045 growth plan, you will see it's also a very lofty document with great goals, some of which we will never see, some of which are already coming to fruition, including our new UDO, which definitely was an investment of taxpayer money to get that off the ground. But something I think that we'll all find to be worthy. So if you look at that 2045 growth plan, it's pretty vague about this area of town, you know, and this is a huge topic, and we can get into ETJ expansion and utility services and all of that. But it was pretty vague about this area of town. And so as a gateway, and having that sort of special designation and that special impact, that's where a plan like this would come in. And again, the way I see it, and everyone has their, their own view on this, it's meant to be far reaching, long range. Some of it'll happen, some of it won't. But your dialogue here is so important, and I just wanted to compliment all of you for taking the time to look at it and really dive in, because the things you're bringing up are the sorts of things that we do want to try to refine before we adopt this thing and, and use it in the, in the coming years as things come in to this part of town. So I don't know if that's helpful or not, but just thought I'd chime in.
Thank you, Councilwoman Archer. We really appreciate it. Thank you very much. Thank you. Any other questions of Mr. Reeves or staff? Well, thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Reeves, and thank you, staff. Appreciate it. Next item, next item on the agenda is new business. Is there any new business?
Chair, Chair Moore, if it's possible for, if the, if the commission is comfortable at this time to make a recommendation on this plan.
Oh, okay.
So that it can go before town.
I thought it was just for information. I'm sorry.
No, I apologize. Yeah, this is an actual item here. We are, staff is recommending approval of the plan with option number one. But I can, we can entertain any other questions if the commission so desires.
Mr. Chair, we have another round of discussion. I just have one more comment on this. If we're going to vote, if we're going to vote to recommend, I think.
Okay. I just want to make sure. So you, okay, so this is not just information. You want a recommendation, and you want to use the same, the same four recommendations that we used for the first item.
Correct, sir.
Okay. So now, that being said, I want to open up our planning board comments. Thank you for consideration. Board Member Applewhite?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think the, the point still stands. The plan is what the plan is. I think there, there are some open questions about density and, and things like that within the, the connected communities. And I like the concept. I do think whether it's staff, the town, us as planning board members, town council, have to do a good job educating the public that lives in this area about what the ETJ is, the value it has, and the, the differences between being in town and not. I think that some folks would end up in here on the night of a rezoning request off Jack Road if there is a, a development of 500 or 600 townhomes, single family homes, businesses, Dollar Generals. I like Howard, Howard's Many Mart's better than Dollar Generals myself. But I think that we have to be prepared for that. And there needs to be something on all of our minds, and this were to move forward as a part of the, the comp plan. And then I assume there will be a stack of tax amendments that would have to be had to include some of the suggestions from the consultant team into the new UDO. But correct me if I'm, I'm wrong.
So the, the planned recommendations to the Councilwoman Archer's comments here was, is a high level plan. And it's got to, I would like it to be something that is going to inform the future land use map, that 2045 plan. And for us to come back with an actual amendment to that plan following this plan's adoption. So in any kind of, any kind of changes in the UDO are going to, would be coming from this plan. So we're looking at height, density, any zoning districts, et cetera, would come back later as another text amendment later on.
Okay. The point still stands. I think we just need to be cognizant of the, the folks that live in this area that probably have no idea they're in the ETJ, or that it could be expanded to include their house, and some of the, the planning and zoning regulations that go along with that. As I mentioned, I think there would be folks off of Jack Road and Government Road and Barber Mill Road that would come in here and have a lot of questions in the event that this were to, to happen, and there is a future rezoning request with, with some significant developments like this. I'm all for it. I like the trail development. I like the, the commercial nodes. Like I said, Howard's Many Mart's preferred over Dollar Generals. But I think that's just something we need to be mindful of. Thank you.
Board Member Dupree, then Board Member Bland.
I'm just going to say, I'll repeat. We're not deciding whether there's growth in this area. There will be growth in this area. And if somebody wants to build a 500 home thing on Jack Road, it's just deciding whether those angry people who live next door are here with this group, or they're at the county level fussing with them. But we're not deciding if there's growth in this area. We're deciding who has input on the growth in this area. And I think it should be Clayton.
Board Member Bland.
When I heard Mr. Penny presenting about this, I've heard him speak three times, three different venues. When I heard him presenting, he was describing a Fenton type project or a North Hills type project. Maybe I misunderstand, but when I, when I visit either of those, those are destination projects. Those are not part of a municipality for me. Maybe, maybe you see it differently. But if I go to Fenton, I go to Fenton. I'm not going to Cary. I'm not going downtown. If I go to North Hills, I'm not going into Raleigh. I'm going to North Hills. I'm going to spend my time there. I'm going to spend my dollars there. So maybe, maybe I've missed the point, but to reference what the chair was, was asking or concerned about, driving people into Clayton. Maybe that's not the point. Maybe the point is that it is a destination project, and they're not, and, and we are separate. Am I missing something?
I think the point is that you just said it. You're going to North Hills, and you're going to Fenton, but you live in Clayton. I would like to be able to go to Clayton or something this close to home and not go to Fenton or North Hills. So I think that's the point. I don't think it's about driving people into town. I think it's about keeping the town from having to continue to drive to the other side of Raleigh or Cary or wherever, which is, I go to Raleigh every day if I can avoid it. When it's not work, I'd prefer to do that. I think that's the benefit of.
But I, I agree with you, Board Member Dupree. But the problem is, that's not Clayton. Just because it has a Clayton mailing address doesn't make it the town of Clayton. I'm not a lifelong Platonian. I've lived in the city of Wilmington, and in Brunswick County, the town of Leland and Belleville, some of the fastest in Brunswick County for years, with the fastest growing county in the country. The ETJs there, the city of Wilmington, and in Brunswick County are used for one sole purpose, the one mile, nothing else, to drive the corridors of there for one sole purpose only. They are just there, just there to help drive business, industry, and residence into the corporate limits, because that's your tax base. As a, and I'm sorry, I'm prejudiced because I'm a Town of Clayton resident. I'm looking at the tax base for the Town of Clayton, the Town of Clayton's property tax, sales tax, revenue. Overseeing the ETJ for the sake of overseeing to ETJ and expanding the ETJ without the nexus of trying to find a way to drive the tax base, whether it's residence, industry, retail, or commercial into the corporate limits of the Town of Clayton, serves no purpose for the Town of Clayton residents. That is the sole purpose of the ETJ. Look up the history. They started because municipalities had zoning regulations and counties didn't. Well, that was 50, 70 years ago. Counties now have zoning regulations. So really, it really serves no purpose. I think, I think Becky Flowers, 45 years ago, you read the article, she said when she first started developing Flowers Plantation, the county didn't have zoning regulations, but they do now. So my point is, as a Town of Clayton resident, and, and to me, I'm hoping my town council that we vote on every two years, they understand their purpose is not to be Johnston County Commissioners. Their purpose is to be Town of Clayton council people, and to drive, to alleviate the tax burden on Town of Clayton residents, alleviate it. And you can only alleviate it if you increase the value of the property taxes, which means you have to drive more developers into the Town of Clayton developing property, more retail, more commercial, and more industry into the Town of Clayton. Or there's no, there's no need to keep talking about no foe and grip falls if all of the workers live in Flowers Plantation. Or they live off of 42 in the county. It serves the Town of Clayton no purpose. We should be driving the people into the Town of Clayton's corporate limits. That's my, if that document had one sentence, they can modify it tonight, till tomorrow. One sentence, all I'm asking, in that whole document, put one sentence. This corridor, this industry on 42, we are, this development will drive industry, drive commercial into the town limits of the Town of Clayton. Fine. But imagine that. It spends most of its time talking about the zoning into the expansion of the ETJ. To the five members that are Town of Clayton residents on the planning board, that should be problematic. That's all I'm saying. That's all I'm saying.
Well, I'll say this. As a lifelong resident of Clayton, I can remember when James Cannon, Ronald Cannon, when, where the Caterpillar Plan is today, that was Data General when it was opened, where Bear and all stuff's Cutter Labs. None of this stuff was in the city limits of Clayton. At the time it was built, and I seen, it was in the, because I remember my father was a fireman, so I distinctly remember being in the, in the Claytex Fire District. It wasn't even in the Town of Clayton's Fire District. And it was a controversy at the time, because we don't want all this, this out, what, what are we getting involved in what's being built on 70 between us and Smithfield, people said. Or what do we care about what's happening on 42 when you get out to where the Data General Plan is? But we know today that is in the Town of Clayton, and it has had a lot to do with how much the town has been able to grow. And, and I'm just, I get what you're saying. I'm not volunteering to pay town taxes. But, but I am saying, I think a rising tide lifts all boats. And what's good for the surrounding area has got to be good for Clayton over time. Because if the surrounding area goes the wrong way, then that's bad for Clayton as well. My opinion.
And, and I agree with you. Until the General Assembly put a halt to forced anization.
Yep. And I'm going to say, I've been here all my life as well. And hopefully, the 2045 growth plan that we're trying to develop will drive more to Clayton. But right now, we can't even handle what we have. It's like the traffic, everything else. We're looking at building, you know, more economical things here. But where are we going to build them at? Everything on Main Street is one story. The only way you're going to build in the Town of Clayton is to go up. So some stuff's got to be torn down, redone, in order to get what we want. So I think that's thinking the big picture, and then, you know, come back and, no, we're not going to do this anymore. You're going to either tear this down, it's got to be built up, drive through McDonald, where you're driving the bottom of it like they do everywhere else, you know. However you want to do it, for us to become bigger, but how are you going to get bigger and keep the small town feel? So you can't really have both at the same time. So you got to start out somewhere and drive people in like you're saying, but keep it a small town feel and, you know, let the residents, because I don't want to pay the taxes either. So that's why I've been saying the whole time, okay, where is the affordable homes? You know, where, where's the something that the average person can live and love Clayton, but you have to go to Smithfield, Selma to be able to, to do that, right? So I'm all with what you guys are saying. I love what I see for the 2045 growth plan. But I hope there's enough of us still around to be able to push what we need to be able to make Clayton what we all sit up here and try to make it be.
I will say this. It is problematic whether you live in the city or outside the city on the planning board. Nobody eats or shops in the city limits of Clayton. That's problematic. If you listen to the If you listen to the planning board.
So I just want to add a comment as well, two comments. One, I'm a little hurt that I live on this side of town in the ETJ and I'm not in this plan. My my community is not in this plan. There's a small section in white on the northwest of this plan that I live in off of Cornwallis Road. That's actually not part of this plan. So I'm a little hurt by that. But I know, I know. I can get past that, though. But going back to the why I asked the questions I asked is because what it's, Chair, Chair, you are correct in saying that the dollars need to go that way. What I'm more concerned about is services. That's what I'm concerned about. That's what drives growth is services, is locations to services. And that's what I'm, that's the one thing I'm just not sure of about this plan is density brings services, right? I would not be able to go home tonight and talk to my wife if I didn't say that I asked for more things to be done in this area and more places to go to because that's what we're looking for, right? That's why that's why I thought the same thing about, you know, how the copper district was gonna be. And and I keep hearing from folks, it better have good retail, it better have good commercial, it better have this, it better have that. And I live five minutes from there. And I would love to do that. I live in ETJ, but I want to come into town to do things, right? And so that's the that's to me is what's the it's kind of the essence of this that's missing. I go back to what I said earlier about traffic and people and all that and growth. Growth brings services, right? Services is what we're looking for. I'm sitting, I'm gonna tell you real quick, I'm sitting in Boulevard two weeks ago in the morning waiting for waiting to have a meeting there. Yes, I went to downtown Clayton to have a meeting chair. And I'm sitting in Boulevard and five pretty old gentlemen sit down right next to me and start talking, right? And one of them, and they're complaining about the growth in the town, just complaining. I've half an hour complaining about the growth. One guy said, I used to, I used to ride my horse down Cornwallis Road, right, and complaining about the growth. And I'm texting my wife and all I said was, these guys wouldn't be sitting here in this place without this growth. That's how we need to think about this plan is how do we drive the services in this area to not only bring people in from outside, but also keep the people within the town. I told Commissioner Applewhite not too long ago, I, one of the reasons I want to be on the CTP and we're on the CTP group together as a stakeholder, I want the town to prove to me why I need to stay here for the rest of my life. That's where I'm at right now in my life. I love living here. I've lived here for a long time. My wife is a lifelong resident. I love living here, but I want the town to convince me why I need to stay here for the rest of my life. And I, what I need to see in this plan is is a way that we can show more dense development to show better services.
Forty years ago, I would say forty years ago, those four old men would have had to go there to get their wives' hair fixed because that was a hairdresser. And there was nowhere to drink coffee in the Town of Clayton after 5:00 and nowhere to eat except Hardee's or Jones's. And Jones's closed then at 2:00, just like they do now. If you wanted to eat after 2:00, you're gonna have to go to Smithfield or Raleigh. That has changed. You can eat in this town at 11:00 at night if that's what you want to do. It may not be what you want to eat, but you can eat at 11:00.
Any other comments?
I'd just like to say, I really appreciate everybody putting their two cents worth in. This is great, 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 great. We've got a good board now. I feel good. I know we've got a lot of new people on here, but I just appreciate everybody's comments. One thing that I just want to throw out there, because I don't know how to rationalize it, but whenever you look at our area, so much of this area is extremely remote from sewer. And so much of this area has got 20, 30, 5, 10 acre tracts. You cannot extend sewer two miles for 50 or 100 acres. You just can't do it. So I don't know if it's just leave it alone, because if you look at this, if you, if you were the average person living in this and said, you know, oh, my God, they're gonna put 500 houses per acre beside my house, but they're four miles away from a sewer pump station, it's not gonna happen. So, you know, should we put existing sewer basins or seable basins in here because it's extremely limited at this point, extremely limited? And there's, I know it seems crazy, but, you know, people, what I see, because I've been doing this for a long time, you know, generational change is really what puts farms on the market. You know, you can look at Vincent Road, I think that's still coming through. You got two tracts. The only reason why that's on the market now is because it was a generational change. Somebody passed away and it got passed down. And when you look at this area, there's not very many big tracts. There's not many, very many big, you know, 100, 2 acre tracts. And then if you have 40 acres that's on the market today, but everything around it's not going to be sold for 40 years, it's going to be developed as 40 acres, more than likely with well, or not well, instead to county water and sewer. So I think that some of what we've got down here is, again, it is a big, pretty picture plan, but when you look at the reality of putting any high density stuff out there, I think that the reality of it is that there's enough land at Ranch Road and 70 bypass Interstate Highway 42 that could be put together to where you could afford to bring sewer out there. But besides that, there's not a lot of tracts that are large enough to be able. But see, if you look at what they've done, you know, they started out with 80 acres, but they've gone and they've paid premium prices and got a bunch of land and some, it's like, people were ready to sell in that location. They were throwing premium prices, but, you know, to do what they've got to do and everything that they're spending, they had to have that. They had to have the density that the council gave them. If the council had said you could go 35 foot on everything, might not have a copper, copper district, you know?
But the copper district was generational change.
It was generational. It started out with generational change, and then they kept going through and adding and adding to it. But just that first 80 acres that it started out with, that that wasn't enough to.
That wouldn't be North Hills.
No.
You make a really good point about the generational change. When I first moved here, you know, over four years ago, I initially looked at, was like, I don't know if I want to live in a neighborhood. I want to have some land where I can have my two new twins that I have now, you know, be able to grow up and, you know, have fun and play in the dirt. And I got to looking at the Town of Clayton's GIS, and I noticed that there's, I think the farmer's name is Lee, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but he owns like thousands of acres between 70 Business, 70 and Ranch Road. What we're talking about right here, it sounds like we need to get the plan right, because eventually that generational plan is gonna happen, and then there's gonna be thousands of acres ready to do the same thing the next 20 years or so. So it seems like we need to do our due diligence now so that way that change can happen later.
Thank you. Any other comments? That being said, uh...
Board Chairman, may I just provide some clarification just real quick for this? Just to mention the copper district, it did annex into the town in 2021. That was part of the ETJ. That's now set to be a big development. Something to make aware is like that they annexed because they were looking for that higher density. And I would just advise when you are looking at Johnston County's future land use that they just updated, look at what they're offering as far as densities go for their residential, for their agriculture, for their low and density and the medium density as well. Just something to keep in mind when you're making recommendations as well, kind of like Mr. Board Member Dupree mentioned earlier, that someone's gonna control what goes in that area. And we would love to hear all your recommendations on how you'd like to see this change and improve. And another clarification is that this plan does show the extension of the ETJ, but that's not necessarily on the table. That was just what was included in the study area as well. So if you were to make a recommendation for this plan, you're not technically recommending the expansion of the ETJ. That was just what was included in the study area. And that half of that area that was in this plan is currently ETJ as well already, and those people have made their voices known through the public outreach.
Thank you. Board Member Dupree?
I'm gonna make a motion on Gateway 42 Small Area Plan. And I'm gonna tell you what you got in red doesn't seem to fit this exactly. But I will say I make a motion to approve consistent with future land map. And I think the action is reasonable in the public interest in that the comprehensive growth plan encourages industrial uses in the area. So that doesn't seem to fit it to me. And the quest is compatible with existing zoning and land in the area. The motion to approve, I mean.
But as you got it written there, doesn't seem like what we were gonna read.
Yes, if I could clarify for staff, they don't appear to have a motion that's specific to this plan.
There should be a motion on page 43 of your, your staff report of the agenda pack. I can pull it up here on the screen.
It's important for me to read it. You better pull it up.
She's got it.
You're hoarding it down there?
We got it.
We got it.
Is that the correct one? That one should be the correct.
Yep, yep, this is it. I make, this is a motion to approve consistent with 2045 Comprehensive Growth Plan. I make a motion to approve the recommend, I make a motion to recommend approval of the Gateway 42 Plan based on consistency with the adopted 2045 Comprehensive Growth Plan. In that, goal LU1 moves to preserve Clayton's character while allowing for growth and development in appropriate areas. Goal LU2 seeks to provide a sense of place and enhance aesthetics along major corridors and in new developments. This action is reasonable in the public interest in that the Comprehensive Growth Plan encourages small area plans such as this within its implementation steps. Thank you for that.
We have a motion made by Board Member Dupree. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Williams. Any uneasiness? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. We got the discussion. Next item on the agenda is items, well, new business. Is there any new business? Item number five.
Chair Moore, we have no new business, but we do have some, some planning director updates and Planner Bruce Venable is gonna help.
Okay, item number, we'll move to item number six, planning director updates.
So we do have the code of conduct, the signatures that have been provided. If you have the, if you have not signed those, please review them and give us the signature so we can pass those on to our town clerk, Ms. Heidi, Ms. Heidi Holland. If you need some more time, feel free to take the time. But just if you can get those signed to us by the end of the meeting, we'll go ahead and collect those. The the other item that we have as a follow-up from our January 22nd meeting, there was, there were the board, I'm sorry, the commission brought forth an idea of having the development maps. I'm sorry, I'm skipping on them. My next item is for the March, I'm jumping ahead of myself here. March 25th is your next planning board meeting, and that is the meeting date that you will be electing your, your chair and your vice chair for the, for the, for the rest of the year here. So that was intentionally done by town council so y'all would have some time to kind of get comfortable with the, with the board and decide amongst who who would be a chair, who would be the next chair, the next, and the next vice chair for the planning board.
Can I, can I interject something real quick? I hope Mr. Moore agrees to serve, continue to serve. But who on the board might be interested in serving as vice chair? You would, I think we've, unless somebody else is gonna put their name up, I think we've got a decision made already.
Well, I would, because the town council doesn't have an approved policy on this, we'll, we'll go ahead and, looks like there are some interested folks, put your names in the hat. So appreciate you coming forward. It's a great opportunity to learn what's involved with, with running the board from, from those who are more experienced. So appreciate that. That will be occurring on the, again, at the March 25th meeting. The next item we have here, thank you, Bruce, we have, I sent an email to the group. We sent this out to town council as well. So these are some upcoming UNC School of Government classes that we think would be very helpful for you. They do have an online session and they have an in-person session as well. If you are interested in attending these, please, you can talk to me after the meeting tonight. Or if you want to think about it, you can always email me and we'll get you signed up for the class. You've got the Planning and Zoning Regional Board Workshop, which is, I think it's very helpful to understand your all's role with the legislative process and kind of just some, some inputs from the folks at the School of Government. You have Planning and Zoning 101, which is gonna talk, tell you probably more about the, the day-to-day kind of what, what planning is involved with in North Carolina. The other one, that course number six, is interesting in terms of what we've been hearing a little bit about tonight with this plan is just growth in North Carolina. And I think that's, that's an interesting one. If you were to choose one of the three, I would recommend the first, the first one, because that's gonna help you, especially our newer board members. But if you'd like to attend all three and you have time for it, just let me know and we'll get you set up for that, okay? The letter D, it's a lot of updates. Thanks for, thanks for hanging out, is the Development Activity Update. This, this is a response, council, I'm sorry, commission had a, had the good idea of just asking about questions about the development activity. Councilman Archer gave us a good idea of looking at our development activity map that we have on GIS. Bruce and Matt Moore with their GIS team here have been updating this map since then and are looking to continue to update that. But we wanted to show you some of the activity or some of the public facing resources that we have for these kinds of, of this development activity. So Bruce, if you want to go ahead and just navigate and show us around here a little bit.
Sure. Just for those who are not familiar, you can access this by going to the Town of Clayton's webpage and then under Departments, going to the Planning Department webpage. There you'll find links on the left-hand side. Under Maps and GIS, if you click that, and then you'll get kind of a description and some previously approved maps and overlay districts that were part of the former plans and current plans. If you click on Online Mapping Portal, and I apologize, it's so many clicks, but there's, there's lots to map and do. Here you'll have basic maps about town limits. You'll have Public Utilities Map and a street map. I recommend you use the GIA data browser here. This will take you to here. This is just an info letting you know that this is updated periodically. And if you have any questions, to call the town. There are multiple tabs here. We have Developments, Zoning, Future Land Use, Transportation, Environmental, and then an all-layer feature where you can select, turn, turn at these different layers on and off for whatever you're looking at. In this Development Projects, you can see with, they're all color-coded. We have green for complete, purple for under construction, light blue for approved and yellow for in review. Just to highlight, this is currently, we're working very hard to update this and hopefully within the next two weeks, this will be completely up to date for everything that's come in the last year. I just wanted to highlight some new updates here. Here we're showing where all these being proposed and currently has been submitted under review here at Rose Street and Highway 70 and 42 East. Additionally, an application has come in for a large industrial development right here at 42 East from the North Carolina Railroad Company. Such developments like this will be present and available on here. Some of them, if you click on the polygon, may have a site plan associated with it. We're not always available to host some of these larger files on there, but we're trying to figure out new ways in order to provide more information for those who are interested in what's going on in the town. The new zoning map has been updated with all the new designations from the Future Land Use Map. And you're also able to enter addresses in here as well if you wanted to find something quickly. Again, you can reference the Future Land Use Map very quickly with this tab and everything and is provided for you here. And if you're interested in any type of environmental features, whether that be floodplain, watershed streams, that can also be found on the environmental map. Or if you're feeling confident, you can use the all layers and turn these different features on and off. If anyone has any questions or would like some further instruction after this meeting or another time, we're happy to send you emails and links and help, kind of help give you guides through it.
Yeah, absolutely. So if we're, go back to the town's website. Again, for those, I think it's helpful for everyone, under the Planning Department page, we do have a section for our brand new adopted UDO. It's gonna be under the same, same area where the map and GIS links are. You're gonna find Unified Development Ordinance. Here you can click on that. And then you can download a PDF copy for yourself to review in case for an upcoming item. So, so this will segue into the, the next item on, on the agenda. Just wanted to give a quick overview of the UDO, big document. Can I pass, you pass me the mouse real quick? Thank you, sir. So my first, my first recommendation would be to... So my first, my first recommendation would be to download this document, save and put it on your desktop. But make sure that you're using the, you're going to the, the most recent one. If you have Adobe Professional or Adobe Reader, you can have it, you can kind of navigate, but you can still do that on this, if you were to click over here, this contents, if you click on that, it will give you the table of contents. So I'd like to just maybe take about five minutes, and I can do this at every meeting if you like, if I don't bore you all to death, but what we have here is all the chapters, you got nine chapters in the UDO. And the ones that we tend to use the most often are going to be your chapter three, which has all your zone districts, conventional districts, and you can click on these, and this is where this is useful. You can just click on this rather than trying to scroll through all the pages. Then chapter four has all the uses. And if I was to point to you to one of these, you've got principal uses and secondary uses in the UDO. Principal uses, I'll click on this, and you'll see this listing of common principal uses. This, if you click, it's all hyperlink, which is real great. You can get to our use table. When it comes to rezoning requests, you're going to find that this might be helpful. We're, we're looking, including this as part of your, your staff report, so that way y'all can easily have this information at your hands. But if you wanted to dig in outside of a staff report, just to get some information, this table's very helpful. Where'd my little mouse go? Someone have, looks like I lost connection. Just one second, we'll try to connect here. Perfect. There, there was a question earlier that, that rang in my mind at the, the commission about zone districts and the establishment of those districts. And just to point that out, in chapter, I want to say 3.1, I'm referring to this quite a bit, just to get that translation. Districts established, for instance, tells you all the pre-adoptions, this districts, and then what they've been translated to. That's a helpful one right there.
Correct. The, I get the question that I was, it, it came to my mind, that I knew that there were some extra districts that were available to developers when they come in for a rezoning request or conditional rezoning that aren't translated into the current land use map that we have. So that, that was what was on my mind when I asked that question. So the, the existing, or the previous districts have already been translated over to the new definitions, and then there's a batch of a few different newer districts that can be, can be used by developers if they want to rezone.
Correct. That's a great point. So you can, I think you might be able to see that here with mixed use and conservation, where they're not existing current, they weren't existing current before, but now they are. Is that what you're referring to?
Yes, sir.
And so this is, these are the, I'm kind of showing you, if you're a, a planning technician, which we are wrapping up our interviews, this is the kind of stuff I would be showing them. The, the, the chapter three and chapter four, then what the other exciting part is, is to kind of understand what the, what the words mean, right? So if I say, I want to build a house, what does that mean in the UDO? Well, it'd be called a single-family detached unit, right? We got a planning jargon. So this is your chapter eight, your terms defined, actually, which it, the words usage. You basically have an alphabet of all the words and terminology, and this is useful for us to understand the context of what, what we're, what, what do we mean when we say macro brewery? How do we define that? How do we, and so when we get questions as staff, we're referring, we're bouncing back between zone districts, the uses, and then the definitions. So that's my brief 101 here. We're working with our consultant to bring you forth some text amendments coming up here soon in next month. And this is a document that is, that is, that we're working with on a day-to-day basis. Happy to take any questions? If not, we'll go ahead, back to you, Mr. Mr. Chair.
Any questions?
I'd just like to make one comment. Y'all took a good start. Good job.
Thank you. Any other questions? We're open for informal discussion with the board. Any informal discussion? I would like to say in my time on the board, and I know Mr. Liskam alluded to it earlier, this is one of the more lively discussions that we've had, and I really appreciate all of the members and then the new members being involved in your discussion tonight. So thank you, we really appreciate it. I know Ms. Archer appreciates it. So it was very enlightening. So I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Anyone else? That being said, I entertain a motion for adjournment. Motion by Board Member Liskam, is there a second? Second by Board Member Lee. All in favor, say aye. We adjourn.